...the life of the United States of America. The Republic of Canada stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every and everything. All right, thank you for coming to the meeting. Uh, we'll call this meeting to order. A roll call and everybody is present with a reasonable seat. Yes, the people that you see here virtual is Brian as well as Tim. Uh, and we'll go on with any. And we have Lori. Okay, so we're all here. Anyway, we'll go through the agenda approval number three. Elementary data motions approve the agenda, voting nine eight as well. Although, uh, so I would, uh, ask for a motion to approve that. Motion to approve the agenda. Open by Mr. Smith, who have a second?
Second.
Second by Casey Hyde. Discussing?
Is anyone talking right now?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Can you hear me? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Can you guys hear us? Brian. Brian, Tim, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, well, I asked for, uh, not agenda. Motion by Mr. Smith, the second by Mr. Case, uh, Casey. Uh, and I ask for all those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries now. Open forum, anybody receiving the open forum?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to share too, I am steering open forum tonight.
Okay.
The first came to us on November 12th. And it is a, um, it's an email to Coach Dave Helverson.
Okay.
I want to thank you for taking a few moments after your team's win on Friday night to chat with my son, Christian Herman, number 74, and compliment him on the game that he played against your team. It was a big night for your team and yet you exhibited excellent sportsmanship and coaching to spend time with him. Christian and I were talking about the game afterwards and he was still beating because of the positive impacts you had on him. Thank you very much and know that it's greatly appreciated. Best regards, and this is from Jeff, um, Jeffrey A. Herman, and this was, um, from the Carlton Brichalbe.
Okay, very well.
And then I'd also like to share this second email that came in. And this came in on Saturday, November 21st. I'm taking some time to reach out to schools, coaches, and administrators that I've heard are handling the constant changes surrounding sports wealth. As the athletic trainer at Orenel High School, I have been closely following the restrictions based on youth and high school sports. Although I understand the frustration players, coaches, families, and administrators feel, I do believe that the pause is the best thing we can do for the community. I'm seeing firsthand how much our healthcare system is suffering right now, not to mention the rapidly increasing rate of infection and deaths. That is why I want to thank you for handling this pause with a good attitude. I've heard from families that over B volleyball has been doing a tremendous job supporting their student athletes and supporting the changes needed to keep our community safe. One parent, I'd like to specifically mention that your student athletes wore masks during the volleyball games. I applaud that. I believe that when kids see their mentors handling adversity well, they learn to do the same. Disparaging of our governor, the Minnesota State High School lead, and those that are trying to make the best decisions in a terribly difficult time is not what we need right now. We need more people like you and your staff. Thank you for being a leader in your school and community. I hope this pause helps us get the virus under control and we can be back to sports soon. And that came from Michelle Bowdy, and it went through Steve, who also then shared it with, um, him. And I've been able to also send out, um, emails to both Coach Helverson and Coach Nichols, um, what a great representation of our over B school district. So, thank you for letting me share those.
So, very proud of them people. Uh, anybody else in open forum? Anything else? Hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, Erin, this is your chance at 2019, 2020 audit presentation, you have the floor.
Sounds good, thank you. I'll try to bring up my PowerPoint presentation here quick. Are you able to see that okay?
Um, we don't see anything right now.
I, I do.
Okay. All right.
We can see it on the Google Meet.
What's that?
We can see it in the Google Meet.
You can see it in the Google Meet?
Yes, I can too.
All right, so you all have it in the Google Meet. And we'll get it.
We're working on it. Give you a second or?
Yes, please, give us just a second, Erin. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we've got you, Erin.
All right, sounds good. Well, thank you everyone for giving me the opportunity here to present the audit tonight. I'm glad to report everything went well. This was our first year on audit, so always a little challenging that first year, but happy to report things went well. Again, we gave an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements, which is the best opinion we can give. A nice clean opinion on, um, the governmental activities, each major fund, uh, the funded and the budgeted actual statements. Um, so by giving the unmodified opinion, we stated that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, financial position, changes in financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund and the remaining funds. Uh, we did have a couple findings this year, uh, the first being the lack of segregation of accounting duties, uh, which is a very common finding to give the pretty much how, especially the smaller districts, it's just not, um, cost efficient or practical to have that complete segregation of accounting duties. So, nothing of concern that we saw, but just something that needs to disclose. Uh, we did have a few prior period adjustments, um, and most of those just had to do, um, with us taking over and making some adjustments to how the previous audit, auditor was doing things. So, um, and all weren't kind of on the governmental wide side of things or the long term. Uh, so nothing we saw, um, from the financial statement that caused concern, but we did have a few adjustments just based on, um, some principles and how we calculate things. Starting report on Minnesota legal compliance, we didn't have any findings of our testing. I'm also required to follow the Minnesota legal compliance audit guide for local governments and happy to report that we didn't see any issues there. I'll cut through the communications wire, some of the different parts of it and look at the financial trends. We'll start with the pupil unit funding, the general education aid. Uh, so this just kind of breaks down, uh, the amounts that are used for the general education aid formula loans, which have an increase of about two percent, uh, over the past five or six years. And hopefully that trend continues, um, with the way things currently are stated at the state.
Erin. Can I, is there pages we can follow on in this that I've watched?
Sure, yeah, if you open up the communications letter.
Okay.
I'm on about page 10 of the communications letter. Want to follow on, most of the graphs and charts are within that document. But, thank you. Um, so first one we're looking at, the resident ADM or the average daily membership. Um, so as I mentioned, uh, these numbers are important in determining state funding. Approximately 85.3% of the district's general fund revenue is from the state, so, um, we're going to check for that. It's based on the student comps. Uh, for 2020, uh, 4.7% decrease between the ADM comps on the residential side. Um, and compared to 2016, there was a 12.9% decrease, so kind of a downward trend on the resident ADM side. Um, but it was a good sign that there was, uh, less resident pupil unit loss or less open enrollment in 2020. Um, so it's a big part of what, um, factors into those formula funding. So, um, overall the trend had a decrease, but, um, there wasn't a huge drop off because there was less pupil unit in the district. So that kind of takes a look at this next graph. So as I kind of mentioned, um, since 2016, the pupil units have actually increased by about 18.87 units, and that's based on the open enrollment number. Um, we're about, let's see, 5.90 pupil units in 2020. That's, um, compared to the 128.93 pupil units in 2016. So that number dropped by about almost 88 pupil units, um, from the 2016 open enrollment, um, and non-residents coming in. So a good sign from that standpoint. And this just illustrates it further with the graphs, um, the changes of the resident ADM and the adjusted pupil unit number. So, a lot of situation over the five years, um, but overall, um, an increase from the total five-year trend. Next, we'll take a look at the general fund sources of revenue. Revenues increased by about 5.2% from 2019 to 2020, or about $315,000. So, with the breakdown, state sources comprised about 85%, uh, the local taxpayer revenue accounted for 6.5% and federal and other sources made up from 8.2% for 2020. Uh, for state sources increased 405,000 or eight percent from the prior year, uh, with most of the, most of that increase coming in the general education aid formula loans, based on those pupil unit numbers, and an increase in the special education aid based on needs for that part. On the expenditure side, uh, the general fund expenditures decreased by about 1.2 million or 16.5% from 2019 to 2020. Uh, and I believe that had to do with the capital expenditure costs. So it looked like there was more kind of building and construction and maintenance activity in 2019, uh, which contributed to the big drop from one year to the next. Uh, and starting with the allocation amongst different programs, those remained pretty, pretty steady from one year to the next, with a drop in that sites and buildings program, which, um, most of the activity took place. Next, we'll take a look at the revenues and expenditures per ADM serve. Um, the per ADM serve has consistently remained below the state average over the five years, uh, but there was an increase of about 11.6% from 2019 to 2020. So, um, even though the ADM number kind of dropped a little bit, the revenues increased. So how's that increase in the revenue for ADM serve? On the expenditure side, kind of a similar thing. Um, consistently, uh, district has been below the state average, um, with a couple years mixed in that were above, a couple below. So, um, that's been a little more fluctuant from year to year. Um, over the past five years, the expenditures for ADM serve increased 2.1%. Uh, while the revenues increased 15.2% over that same time period. So, uh, that seems to indicate that the revenues are increasing faster than the expenditures, which is a good sign. Next, we'll take a look at the general fund budget to actual numbers. Uh, so initially, the original budget anticipated deficit spending of about 665,000. Uh, the final budget had a few amendments mixed in there, um, and anticipated deficit spending of about 555,000. And then the actual results had an increase or surplus in fund balance of about 334,000. So hopefully that's kind of a pleasant surprise to see that the revenues and expenditures did well compared to the budget. The actual revenues were 6.6% over the final budgeted revenues, and most of that had to do with state sources being over budget, um, primarily conserve, due to conservative budgeting with the general education aid and then that special education funding coming in higher anticipated. On the expenditure side, in total, they were about 7.2, they were under, excuse me, 7.2%. Uh, stuff Jason was looking on there, being under budget by about 176,000. Kind of related to anticipated expenditures, although they're always kind of tough in cost-sharing agreements and contracts and services. Uh, the rate mission category program was 120,000 under budget, uh, and that had to do with some staff introductions along with the impact of COVID-19 on some of the wage and fringe benefits. The buildings program was 86,000 under budget, and that had to do with the rental lease payments coming in under them, anticipated along with some electricity costs. And then the final district support services were about 53,000 under budget, uh, related to professional service and technology repairs. That came in very anticipated amounts. Next provides kind of a breakdown of the operations and the different components of fund balances. Uh, so as previously stated, the revenue increased 5.2% while the expenditure decreased 16.5%. Um, the unassigned portion of the general fund, uh, which is available for future spending, increased by about 264,000 to a 12,000, 10,000 at the end of fiscal year 20. So, it had been, kind of been a deficit of 153,000 at the end of 19, and a nice boost with, uh, increased revenues and decreased expenditures, uh, brought that back up, um, up here as well. So, step in the right direction from that standpoint. The next chart is an unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of the unrestricted expenditure. So that kind of goes in line with what the fund balance, you know, the fund balance pump of the district is. So, it's really below the state average, which is kind of under around 2,000. Um, but with that increase, it's up to a positive 2.1% at the end of 2020. Finally, we'll take a look at the special revenue funds. So first, the food service funds. Um, that had revenues exceed expenditures for the first time in the five years presented, so a good sign for the food service fund. For the one-year differences, the food service revenues increased by about 33.3%. And that had to do with about the summer food service program that was put in place mainly a result of the COVID-19 and the federal reimbursement for those meals. Um, and at the same time, the expenditure actually decreased by 1.9%. So, a nice boost in revenue, um, expenditure stayed relatively stable. And last, we go community service fund. Um, that one had decreases in both revenues and expenditures, uh, mainly the COVID-19 and the impacts of COVID-19. So, probably not a big surprise there. Um, revenues decreased about 17%, uh, while the expenditure decreased 5%. So, um, again, a bit kind of relating to the environment we're facing and hopefully that one will come back to life, um, to present later, but that one's kind of tough to control since a lot of it has to do with homeschooling, distance learning, and things like that. Any questions or concerns, um, in regard to the information presented? I've got my contact information here as well. If you come up with anything, if you're kind of looking through the reports, definitely feel free to reach out with any questions or concerns or if you're looking for clarity on any of the documents.
Hearing none, we'll see.
Erin, will you be going over anything then in the, the financial statements? Or is on the communications, this basically covers, um, the condition of the district, correct?
Well, right, yep, yeah. As I mentioned, if you have anything kind of going through the financial statements, feel free to, you know, especially some of those prior period statements or things like that, that might look a little different than the prior years. I know one had to do kind of with the maximum effort loan, uh, that were given. Uh, so the prior auditors didn't pump that as a liability, which probably should have. So you'll see a big prior period for that one, uh, but then it does come right off the books in fiscal year 20. So, big numbers can play there, um, with the prior period adjustment and the special input in the end of, end of the year, little impact the actual statements.
Very good.
And of course, we're celebrating that food service is in the, the black for the first time in five years. So that's something to very much celebrate. And then of course, um, with our, um, balance of 2.1% in the, the black instead of us continuing to go downward. And that's also, um, for our board members, that is before any of the one, um, one-time fund transfer that, um, that we will be able to, um, to do yet this, this year. Um, so, so, um, it's looking better. We know that we still need to have more students to generate more revenue. And, um, and I believe that Erin did also share that our open enrollment has increased, but it's our, our regular resident, um, student body that is flatlining and, and somewhat decreasing. And so, we, um, we just need to have more students, and that's what we have heard for, you know, every, every year. For a small district to be very successful, we need to have more students.
Yes, I think it's very positive report, we're having the right direction. There's some situations along the way to have, along the way to have big factors that will take them. So, Erin, anything else? Erin?
Nope, I'm good to go. So, thanks again for having us as your auditors for the 2020 year.
Well, thank you for the information. Any board members got any immediate questions for Erin? All right, hearing none, thank you very much, Erin.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
All right. We'll move on, that was very positive, and I liked it. For the first time in five years that I'm on the board, it's both positive things I've seen. So, good job, people, everybody. All right, we'll move on. Uh, we'll go to reports, number six, elementary, uh, pre-K five principal, Alicia Nelson.
Hi.
Hi.
Hope you all have a good night, you're doing well.
Just made our day.
Good. So, um, I just really have time to pile my usual picture reports. Been a little bit curious since you, uh, the weekend and today, I just moved into my office today. Um, covered a lot of different roles today, and we're doing some planning for people. So, I just thought I'd email you a quick list, but here's what the various staff we had in Albany said we worked on coming from these places in place after our last COVID-19 council. So we're kind of stepping on our feet in every way that we discussed. Um, we celebrated our student representation, student of the quarter. We celebrated the EIS and received that one. Their video of I'm on seven street, human touch, they, they were around the building. And then we started, um, a drawing for good behavior stuff. We have this lying backpack, some tickets. And today we helped working with us and, um, are awarding students with over the elementary t-shirts and pencils and things like that. So we'll be doing stuff like that to encourage positive choices in our building and, um, bring some excitement to that. And we move on to our next topic, which is ownership. And we'll be sending this whole quarter teaching specifically about how young students can take ownership over their learning and their, um, own health and their habits, habits, as well as their safety. So, in response to that, we have had some community meetings, um, supporting and proactive for that. Went well, we did discuss things that we could do for kids online and ways to support students should we enter into distance learning. Um, so there was some great work from that committee. We are on TLC roles and our team contacts to make sure that our plan to support staff makes sense, considering this career and the new demands, but on teachers, we're very aware of the extra strains. And, um, it's kind of, it's kind of a bit chaotic, never knowing what students kind of be in your class on what day or what their needs might be or their family needs might be. And we're reaching out for technologies, food, all types of things. But we're just trying to, through our professional development plan, support staff better and meet our goals and pass more real risks, given the situation they're in. So I think staff appreciated being able to join virtually if they needed to for staff development. I know a lot of people departed that, and I was really impressed, called professionals, everybody was, when they're locked in and working together online. We are just, um, an awesome team really. So, anything good that is still happening is directly the result of all adults and all the roles working together in our building. Whether, you know, bus transportation, food service, paraprofessionals, media center staff, colleagues, secretary, teachers, everybody, just the bucket, you name it. So, we wouldn't be able to continue doing so well under a special dress, a special belt here without everybody sitting in. And he's, uh, being off social work, so I want to thank you for that. Um, the kids, you know, are doing awesome, especially you and me who are here. We understand that that's a gift right now and that they may not be able to last. So, I think the kids are seeking advantage of the time they have and working really hard. And one thing we talked about is that our kids in the elementary have had already, um, a much longer and learning experience this year than a lot of kids are going to get in an entire school year, given the serious situation. So, I'm just really proud that they've been able to be in school every day and continue to make these gains. So, this just wouldn't happen without people being really diligent. Other than that, um, I do see that people are getting tired and worn, so we're looking forward to things to be great. And that time is much needed and family love is very much needed. So, if you have questions, let me know.
Alicia, thank you for that positive report.
You're welcome.
And, uh, if anybody has any questions at this time, we'll move on. The six twelve principal, this is David.
Hi, everyone.
Oh.
So, so, uh, one of the first things is our student of the quarter. Um, we were celebrating that today, and we did our two senior high students today. Our middle level student is actually tomorrow, and so, uh, that person is in your report, but I'm not going to announce it right now because we always like that to be a little bit of surprise. So, you, um, Kaylee Bowling and Kira Hoffman. And so we presented, um, them with their awards today. And of course, um, we're down at the bottom of the report that you have on your line. Fire, um, fire credit union, that they continue to sponsor our student of the quarter program. And for those of you, um, who aren't aware, um, fire credit union, um, sponsors program, that they give a $25 gift certificate to every student that wins. So then that way, if they already have an account as fire credit union, when they bring in a student, they put $25 into it. If they don't, then they create a new account. So that's really a nice reward for these students for, you know, just being good role models for, um, the rest of their classmates. Um, and then our band and choir teachers are also working really hard right now. They're trying to figure out how they are going to be doing their concerts this year when, you know, we can't get everyone to have it. When we have only half of the students here, um, Dr. Fordor and Mr. O'Connell are doing a nice job of trying to report students, trying to message, and then they're trying to draw ways to get the students together. But that is their goal for, um, December, is to find some way to get one unified, um, recording that they can present out to the community and to parents with some of their, you know, some more students and kids. Like, you know, and that's really hard, you know, when you have a day where it just happens to be, you know, based on the, um, the bus schedule and the bus route, I can say. And Mr. O'Connell has no trumpets for one day of the week or two days of the week. And so it's really kind of hard, that makes like, um, sound like old piece unless you try to piece it together. And, oh, he has done a lot of, you know, using technology, very useful, um, you know, very good ways in order to make it sound like one unified group that we're. ways in order to make it sound like one unified group, they're working on that. National Honor Society with Ashley SSSF is also sponsoring a blood drive with the American Red Cross on December 2nd. However, because we can't do it in our school, it's going to be at Lewis Lake Covenant Church, and so by December 2nd, we'll make sure that we send more information out to everyone in regards to that. We do have National Honor Society students who are going to be participating and helping with that process as they always do, and so I know Transportation is working on being able to get students out there when they need to. So that'll be a big undertaking, and I believe either Mrs. Helschang or the SSSF is going to be out there monitoring, so that'll work for them. The Onus Group with Ms. Wise is sponsoring a toy drive and a food drive in the month of December, and that will be to help local families, and so I know information for that is still under work, and will be coming out right after Thanksgiving, so they'll be working on that. Ms. Fester with FFA was proud to announce that Brianna Pony, she is a homeschool student, but she participates in our FFA program, and she is going to be going to state for meet evaluation this spring. So it was a virtual competition, and she said it was very difficult because they had to, you know, be looking at pictures of everything in order to, you know, evaluate the needs, and so she said it was very, very different than what they had in the past. She said Brianna did real well, and is going to be representing local media activities, so that's very, very exciting. Mr. Nelson and the student council members are going to be helping on Wednesday with the COVID-19 meal assistance program through our school here with CAREPA, and so they will go in and help with the meals, I don't know if they're going to be, you know, packaging them, you know, cooking, or just helping with the serving and bringing them out to the families, to the households, but that's something that they're working on. And they're also starting a paid forward campaign, in which they're going to be sending different notes to different people, telling them why they're thankful for them, and why they are a hero to our school, so I think that's a really nice program to be starting this year, and, you know, particularly right now, when we have a lot of school members that are, you know, we're working up, you know, in many different areas that we normally don't have to work, and so it's always nice to, you know, feel a little appreciation, so it's really nice that students are working on that. Overall, our conferences did pretty well, I didn't get all the reports from the high school staff yet, because some of them are still working on them. So all of the high school conferences were virtual or phone conferences, some of the teachers are still working on completing those phone conferences if the families did not join, so they're reaching out to them, making the phone calls, or sending emails, just giving the parents updates about what students do in class. The middle level celebration is being scheduled for December 4th right now, and so that will be a virtual celebration also. You know, last spring, we had to do a virtual one, but that one we didn't have anybody in the building, and so this one will probably be pretty similar to that one. And then, of course, we had lots of meetings, surveys with the teachers, meetings with the teachers, communication with the teachers on all of our different learning plans, and, you know, any anticipation about that, you know, that we may need to go into distance learning, and so we're just trying to make sure that we're finalizing all of those plans, so that it will be very quick and seamless when the students, if they do need to roll that route, and so lots of work all the time, every day, working on that area. And then at the very end, I just have, you know, some lion pride going out to, you know, the people who tried to make our Veterans Day program as fast as it could be, you know, it was so different than what we normally have in the past, however, it was so really nice to be able to hear a piece of special appreciation going out for all of our veterans. And we also want to thank all of our teachers who work hard every day, keeping themselves and the kids safe while adapting to a new type of teaching, you know, they're constantly, you know, cleaning, getting supplies, you know, reminding kids to have their mask, you know, up over their nose, constantly reminding kids to, you know, face the heart, and reminding the kids that, that, you know, if they want to stay in person, that this is what we need to do, and overall, the kids do want to be in person, and so they're doing a very nice job. And then also lion pride to our paraprofessionals who are adjusting their schedules and duties daily to cover vacancies, you know, right now, it is so hard to cover all of the vacancies that we have, and so every day, there's, you know, different areas where people are being pulled from their regular duties to cover some other duties that are more, you know, more of a necessity, and need those coverages, and so people are moving all over the place all the time. And I think just overall, I think, you know, our school year is going the best that it can in the situation that we have, and I do think that, you know, our teachers are definitely working, you know, very hard trying to class, but then they also have several students that are online at the same time, and trying to make sure that they're hearing the instruction and giving their questions answered, and it's always kind of a proven surface all the time. So, you know, like Alicia said, I do think that we are getting a little worn out, but, you know, I think it's just going to make them a little more thankful for this Thanksgiving break, so hopefully, everyone will stay safe and stay well at the same time, so. And that's all I have for my report.
All right, thank you very much, good report. We understand all of what you're saying. Any questions or comments for her at this time? Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move on to our high school principal, Kathy Belzak, or superintendent, I'm sorry.
First of all, finally, finally, we are signed up for Phase One training for Minnesota School Board Association. So that training for Phase One is for Tim, Josh, and Casey, and it is scheduled for Friday, December 4th, 9:00 till noon, and we're going to try to have it right here in the boardroom, so that there can be some discussion going on at the same time. And I did sign myself up for, as a mentor, but this invitation goes out to all of our school board members, if anybody wants to come in and be a part of that, of that day, that training, you are more than welcome to do that. Also, I did send out with our, with our update for the revised agenda tonight, that the policy committee meeting is going to be on Monday, November 30th, and we're scheduling that for 6:00 PM. So that's Brian, Casey, and Tim, so 6:00 Monday night, and it can be virtual from your homes, or it can be coming in, and we would conduct that in the conference room. The next thing is a COVID update for you. At this time, I updated our website again this morning, that we currently have one student who is an active positive, and we have two staff members that are active positives. And we had a situation where Canova County Public Health made a call out in the evening last night, and shared with me that we needed to quarantine students as close contacts. And so it was really a truth test to see how quickly we would be able to put a plan into place with as much convenience as we could for parents. It was extremely important that we get those calls made last night, and I will, I will do the shout out, this, it would never have been successful if Kelly, our school nurse, and Alicia, and Terry, if they wouldn't have helped. So the four of us were working off of our COVID student listing and making telephone calls, and I can't thank them enough for making sure that parents were notified last night. We only have three students of the 43, so there were 43 students that were impacted by this calling last night. And so, one, so we really needed to work fast, and again, I thank them for doing it. We only have three students that actually came into school this morning, and we used our boardroom as a upholding place, and had the kids spaced out, they had breakfast. Mrs. Nelson and Ms. Anderson made sure that they had activities to do while they were waiting for a parent or grandparent to come and pick them up. So it ran so smoothly, that it kind of gave us that opportunity to know that if we needed to pivot very quickly and take care of a situation where lots of contacts had to be made, we now have the, we have the experience in making that happen again if we need to.
Kathy?
Yes.
I don't give a damn, but I want to ask, how did the parents receive that?
The parents, the parents that we talked to personally, they were very appreciative that we called them last night right away, even though it was late, rather than waiting until this morning. They also understood, completely understood, that this was a safety precaution to make sure that we're being responsible, we're being proactive, and we're making sure that we're taking care of their children, their families, and our staff all at the same time. So, very well received. We left lots and lots of messages, though also, and one thing that I need to do is communicate with our parents that with this close contact, is what they were considered, close contact, it means that just the students that we were identifying needed to go into quarantine. What I'm finding is when, when parents or people hear the word quarantine, they're thinking everything shuts down for their family for 14 days, and that's not the case with close contact. It's the students that are identified simply need to be at home under somebody's care, and it's where, it's kind of like the yellow light, I'm assuming, so it's kind of the pause, it's the, hey, let's watch carefully, to make sure that it doesn't develop into a more serious situation. So, been explaining that on the phone a lot, and I want to make sure that I get that out onto the school website, as kind of like a definition of this is what that situation looks like. And with this watching of the, of the students, after watching for the 14 days, if there are no symptoms, then the students, in this case, all of our students will be back on December 1st, which is, it is honestly great that Thanksgiving came in at this time, because it really bought families some time without having to worry about someone taking care of a child that's starting to cry. So it has worked out as best as it can. The next thing I wanted to share is another thank you, a thank you to our food service. We try, our administrative team tries to take care of our teachers during conferences, and we usually do provide some kind of a meal for them, that's something that's easy for them to go and grab or eat when they don't have a conference scheduled at a particular time. And to be honest, it's been very convenient for we as an administrative team to ask food service to help prepare foods that we know are some of the favorites of our staff. And so, we pay for it, but our, but our food service prepares delicious meals on our behalf, and I just want to make sure that food service understands how much we appreciate them doing that, because it takes a lot of extra time on the already busy people in our, in our food service department. So, that was wonderful, heard lots of good comments from, from our teachers about, it was chili and wild rice soup, and then bright cheese bread, and it was ice cream, and then we had other little tricks and stuff to go along with it. So, again, kudos to them, and a great thanks to them.
Kathy, they'll appreciate that.
I know they will, and the thing is, is we appreciate them too. The, Mrs. Davis mentioned the blood drive, and I want you to understand that we didn't change the location, it was the organizers of the blood drive, and they really believed that it was important not to bring that, that service into our school, but to try to find another alternative location. And they, it is just amazing to me that they, they would go to those efforts, because they're the ones that made the contacts with our local churches and found a location for us. And it's so important, they need blood very badly right now, and so we already had, through the local donors and students, I believe 38 people had already signed up to donate blood. And so, we do want that to happen, and I had shared with Ashley SSSF, and I talked about this for a long time, trying to get it all organized, and so that the whole transportation piece, because this is a school-sponsored activity, it is the school district's responsibility to provide that transportation. We don't want any students out there driving on their own during our regular school day. And so, transportation, again, another kudos to a group that will always make things work for us. And I will be taking one timeframe to help supervise, I can bring my laptop with me and do my work virtually from, from the site at Lewis Lake Covenant Church, and so that's, that's what we're planning for that. Wanted to share with you that Jess Knoll and I had a para meeting tonight after school, and again, Jess Knoll is doing just a marvelous job in that new role that she's in as a parag director, and also, might as well share too, that Karina Anderson is doing a fantastic job in her new role with many, many different hats in our district as well. Things are going so much, you know, in these difficult times, those people make it so much better for all of our staffing, for us students, and for the administrative staff, so we really appreciate them. The para meeting was to talk about if we needed to pivot into a new model, because if we're pivoting into a new model, what will happen is there are many people in our support staff, that their duties and their responsibilities to the district, and their hours of paid services to the district will, will decrease, and in some cases, dramatically. So, we have, we do have a great need for all of these different, different groups, categories of people, but in a different way when it comes to distance learning, if we need to move in that direction. So, the meeting today was to talk about some of those options for people to be employed in a little bit different way, and we have childcare services, we have child-specific or in-person learning for special needs students, we have the delivery of meals, we have office assistant work, custodial projects, and then from that meeting, great ideas from the meeting, and one of the suggestions was helping students general as students with a homework hotline, where they could actually call in and, you know, virtually, and get some help with their, with their homework. And so, that, the actual choosing of the different positions would have to be on a seniority basis. And then the other piece, and this is, this really is bearing your approval as a school board, I will be bringing an MOU to you at, most likely, at our next meeting, and that MOU is basically asking for support with our parent, with our support staff, if they want to take an unpaid leave from the district. So if we were to go into distance learning, and along with that unpaid leave would be guaranteed that they would be able to have job security and be able to come back into our programs, if we were to go, if we have to go to distance learning, coming back into hybrid or in-person learning, they'd be able to come right back into those, those positions. Or, the possibility of them being able to have that job waiting for them in the, you know, through the 2021, 22 school year, just again, that guarantee of showing loyalty and appreciation for staff that have been working in our district. The other piece of it is, many of our support staff have built up hours of PTO, or the personal leave, or their sick leave, and then being respectful of that time that they've already earned in our district, if it goes where we have to go into distance learning, and they aren't able to work their regular hours, they would be entitled then to be able to keep those, you know, to actually use up all of their PTO that they have earned or paid sick leave and personal leave. And they know that this is in, basically in draft form, but that it will need to come to you through an MOU, and just, we needed to have this meeting today to basically reinforce and support our staff, and let them know that we are thinking about them, and we will protect them and their positions and their wages as members of the class are there. The choosing of positions, Jess had actually said, had them sign up, they had two choices of those different jobs. They had two choices of those different jobs, locations, or job duties. And so they are actually sharing with us what they would prefer, and that would be based on seniority. So that happened today, and I can't say enough for the people that we have working in our school system, just absolutely fabulous people that will do anything and everything they can for the students in our district, and that is very appreciated.
That's very proactive, I appreciate that. Anything else, Kathy?
That is good.
All right, any questions or comments for Kathy? Hearing none. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the board members. Any board member have anything they'd like to report? Okay, well, I do. I just want, it's not a report, I did attend the advisory committee to warn our kids as to how long they can stay in this school if we decided to stay as it is. I think it's very positive, the kids like it. I have the experience of working in the school district, and I see the kids every day, elementary as well as the high school kids, junior high. Very positive. I'll tell you what, it puts a smile on my face, especially the young ones coming in. Very proactive with these kids, and they love it, and they want to be here. I also want to put a shout out to our football team and our volleyball team. Congratulations on great seasons. I know they went through some adversity and things, but their football team played very well, and our volleyball team was very competitive. So congratulations for the kids that were on that team, on those teams, and to their coaches. And as far as, I want to shout out for the National Honor Society is doing a great job, and all the little things that they're doing that involve everybody. And I also want to put a shout out to those people that put that veterans program together. I did get to watch it, and believe it or not, even though I've been in person in our school, it was moving, and I really appreciate it as a veteran myself than what the kids did for the veterans in our community. So thank you. That's all I have. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to our student school board member. Hazel Myers.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Hazel.
So volleyball had their last game last week, and I think their record was three to nine. But I know they are really competitive with their playing. In football, they had their last game last week as well, too. Their record was six and one. And it was really exciting that they were the conference champions because I don't think it's been done in a long time. So everyone was really excited about that. And then the last thing is, we had a financial aid meeting last week. Kind of talked about the FASFA and scholarships, and if anybody had any questions about how to fill them out. So that was helpful. And that's it.
Thank you, Hazel. All right, we'll move on to other district employees. Hearing none from that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I will entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. We'll move on to Mr. Smith. Second. Second by Casey Hines. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. 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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Action items, approve whatever came. Casey, just get off the floor.
I have a motion to approve October claims of 136,839,858.
November.
Well, Kathy, that is not over. We have it on here.
November.
Yeah.
That's what it always is. You're, it humps up November, but of course.
So a motion to approve October claims of 136,839,858.
Motion is made by Casey, you'll have a second. Second by Mr. Smith. Discussion. We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Casey Hines?
Aye.
Brian Hickerson?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye. I approve it as well. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, item ten, assurance, don't win it, we're going to go to nine eight, which is a FY20 audit report, motion to accept the audit report as it was presented tonight, or entertain that motion.
One more.
Motion by Casey Hines. You have a second. Second by Nicholas. Mr. Smith. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote for that as well. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Casey Hines?
Aye.
Mr. Hickerson?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson? Aye, and I will also approve it, motion carries unanimously. And we'll move on to item ten, which is assurance of compliance. And Kathy, you want to highlight that?
It's just, it's the formal assurance of compliance that is required and due by November 15th every year. And basically, it is making sure that we have a human rights officer, who is myself, and then a 504 coordinator, who is Mrs. Davis, and a Title IX coordinator, who is also Mrs. Davis. And that's also where we need to update any policies dealing with bullying, harassment, title rape, anything that we're revising needs to be sent to the state as an updated policy to them. And we didn't have any actual revisions. We always review our policies. Revisions are usually necessary when state legislature has new changes. So on that form, it's all been done and sent in, and just needs to have your acknowledgement and approval.
All right, thank you, Kathy. I'll entertain the motion to the assurance of compliance or form, whatever it is called. Approval. Mr. Smith. You have a second.
One second.
A second. Just missed it again, I've been waiting for you. All right, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve transportation and that type of thing. Kathy, you want to elaborate?
I can. This is a new requirement in order for us to receive our Title I funds. It's a federal requirement. And so this memorandum of understanding is a first time and needed to be created, and then leads through both to the CWA, which is Child Welfare Agency. So our Child Welfare Agency is Canaveral County Family Services. And so you should have seen in your documents that it was signed by Chesford, who is the director of Canaveral County Family Services Agency. And they had signed it, they had signed it on 11/17. So it went through their board and has been approved. And then I'm asking that it be approved through our board. And then again, this is something that will always need to be in place with our Title I because foster care students need to have, they need to have transportation provided to them, and that's a cooperative between, cooperation or collaboration between family social services and the district. So if going through this, you would see that the responsibilities are there. So if we have some foster, if we have foster students that are in our district, we have to make sure that they are being transported to the school and in most cases of their choice. So say that we have some foster care students that live in our district, but they have been students in Cambridge-Dyce County. It's going to be our responsibility to get the kids down to Cambridge-Dyce County because you don't want to upwork them when they have established already some roots. And so the county then helps. So the county and the school district collaborate together. How can we make this happen for these foster children? And make it happen.
Do you need sharing either the cost?
The cost, yes. The cost can come from the county, the cost can also come through our Title I funds. And that's why it's connected with Title I funding.
Thank you. All right, entertain that motion. To accept the MOU with Canaveral County Family Services Foster Care. Let's move on to Mr. Smith, you'll have a second. Second by Casey Hines. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item twelve, business manager authorization with fire. Kevin Ewing, we all saw the memo, and I'm sure it's the cast of those credit cards. Any other questions on that one? Okay, then I'll entertain that motion. So move. Motion by Mr. Hickerson. You have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number thirteen, district health insurance contribution increase. Do I understand that the board has to approve the increase? Or is...
Laurie, would you like to explain why we needed to actually put these increases into place for our employees?
Yeah, I wish I had the actual information with, but you can't, according to the Affordable Care Act law, you can't target employee more than, it's like nine point nine or something, nine point two, I don't remember, percent of their wage. And it's based on minimum wage. But you can't make them pay more than that percentage of their income for the health insurance. So the district isn't contributing enough. So if we have too many employees where we haven't contributed enough, and some of those employees go to the exchange for insurance rather than buying through the district, it could end up being fine for the district. So that's why we need to keep up with that minimum amount of contribution.
Thanks, Laurie. All right, so I'll entertain a motion about the district health insurance contribution increase. Motion by Casey Hines, you have a second. Second. Second by Mr. Hickerson. Any further discussion?
Because that this will most likely come to the negotiations table because this is just short term, but we will need to be looking at adjustments in the aftermath.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Enrollment numbers, item number fourteen.
That was sent to you this evening also, and we're at exactly the same, four hundred eighty-seven students as we were on October 26th. And we have gained two students in our elementary. Looks like one student in kindergarten and one student in second grade. We have lost two students in our high school, in our secondary. Looks like one sixth grader and one ninth grader.
Very well. Four hundred eighty-seven students. We'll entertain a motion to approve the enrollment numbers. Move by Mr. Smith. You have a second. Second by Casey Hines. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number fifteen, donation by Dan Michaels, donation for thousands of Coca-Cola cans for revenue to school. I questioned that one, I went, what is that? But I got an explanation. Doesn't make sense to me, but it's a good thing. That's all I heard. And the other one is the Old Glory Lions, twelve sixty-five, eight hundred and sixty football bus, that eight point five for boys' basketball. I will entertain a motion to accept those donations. Motion by Casey Hines. You have a second. Second by Mr. Smith. Discussion.
Just, if you don't recall, every bottle cap of a Coke product is worth a nickel to the school. And in the cartons, depending on the size of the carton, it's anywhere from, I believe, fifteen cents to twenty-seven cents. And so if you haven't been collecting those, it would be great if you would, because then we will input that into... All you have to do is get the stuff here, like Dan Michaels has done, and just bring in bags and bags of it for us. And then we input it into the system, and we get money for the school. And so we have not, when it was first presented to you, it can't be where we have kids do that because Coca-Cola does not want to be promoting talks with children. But it can certainly be promoted with adults in our community. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Did you follow that yet? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to non-action items with the sixteen policy second reading, which is going to take place in another meeting. So if there is any other policies you want these people to look at, email them and let them know. I've been approached by one person that said to me to look at it, so I'll bring that up to the committee chair. Who is the committee chair? Is that Mr. Peterson?
That, we don't really have a committee chair. It's just a committee.
All right, I'll bring it, because there's a lot of... Any other things on that? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. And that meeting was when, Kathy, again?
It's going to be Monday, November 30th. Because of course, you know, the policy committee responsibilities change as of December.
As of early. Let's get that done.
Right out of that last day, that we're going to make it happen.
Well, we appreciate your time for doing that. I know what it takes. All right, before we go on to item number seventeen, I would like to extend a happy Thanksgiving to all the people that are watching today and all the members of our school board. As suggested, enjoy yourself, relax. So in that, the school board, I wish the community a happy Thanksgiving, our staff, our families, our kids. Everybody have a safe holiday. I will move on to seven feet. Motion adjourned at seven ten. Thanks, Brian. Motion by Mr. Hickerson, seven ten. Will you adjourn the meeting? Second?
Second.
Second by Casey Hines. She beat you, Pete. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming, have a happy Thanksgiving. We're off.